President, President of Education, Board of Education, Board of Superintendent, Board of Supervisors, Year 0001, and the Board of Education Superintendent Number 19, will be held in the number August 15, 2017, at 6:00 to 8:00 in the Board Meeting Room of the Chief of Learning and Supervisors, Board of Supervisors, Board of Education. The agenda will be scheduled, unavailable for public instruction, in August at the Secretary's, in the Board of Education, at the Ammon Trade Department, in the Georgia Working House. Please note that the Board meetings in August will begin at 6:00 to 8:00 in the same section as 84, Dash 1412, of the Nebraska District. The public is hereby informed that it can happen, of the Nebraska Open Community Act, this process, in the Board Meeting Room, in the USR. Please remain in the room for the pleasure of the meeting. Vice President Erdenberger, the leader of OPS Division, please. Thank you. You can follow along on your agenda. The OPS vision is every student, every day, prepared for success, and the mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. Thank you. Your call, Mr.? President? President? Can I separate from the conversation, to the next question, and then the next question? And then, in the next question, to the next question? Okay, there's one move to separate, to the last question, to the next question? We definitely cannot separate, so we should just... Yes. Okay, there's one move to separate, to the last question, to the next question?
Oh, yeah, aye.
Head.
And just to clarify, we're voting on whether or not to separate right now?
Great, yes.
Okay, aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Six aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'll take a motion to excuse the absence of Ms. Cassidy.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Head, seconded by Vice President Erdenberger. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mr. Smith?
So moved.
Second? Okay, there's no second. Moving on to a motion to excuse the absence of Mr. Snow.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Head. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Cracky. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Head.
Aye.
Erdenberger?
No.
Holman?
Aye.
Tealyn?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Cracky?
Aye.
Three aye.
Motion fails. Moving on now to Board and Superintendent Communications. Mr. Ryan, good evening.
Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of the Board. The financial statements for the month ended June 30th, 2022, have been finalized and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Dr. Logan?
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board of Education, those here in attendance, and those watching the stream from home. With August arrival, we are excitedly approaching the start of our new school year. Our district has worked throughout the summer in countless ways to prepare. This morning, we had our leadership kickoff at Buena Vista High School. Teams have built the foundation for new curriculum in our classrooms. Bond work continued at dozens of schools. Four brand-new schools are set to open, actually, those schools are already open. Each school has focused on structures and supports for positive behaviors, positive behavior in our classrooms, and this week, we welcome many of our fellow staff. Our school and district leaders gathered today, new teachers gathered throughout the week, and all teachers return next week. Right now, families are receiving back-to-school information by email and United States Postal Service mail. A reminder that on Saturday, August 13th, we'll host our Back-to-School Bash at Baxter Arena, which has been on a hiatus since 2019. Each elementary school will have a booth to visit with families, will have entertainment and activities from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That always is a really fun event. The day before our Back-to-School Bash, we invite families to join us at Buena Vista High School for an evening with NASA astronaut, Jose Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez will share his personal story, how his family and teachers changed what he thought was possible in life. You'll also hear about his journey to become an astronaut after being denied 11 times. We value our families as essential partners dedicated to each child's success. It will be an inspirational evening ahead of our new year, and will be held in Spanglish. So everyone will be able to understand what is going on, and because Dr. Hernandez has done these around the country, the Spanglish works real, just, just fine. We have more information in a form to RSVP on OPS.org. Also, we do expect that to, it's free, but we expect to sell out, so please make sure to go on and RSVP. We are going to stream it into the gym, in case we run out of room in the auditorium, which we certainly expect that we will do. Tonight's agenda includes further consideration of dual-credit opportunities for our high school students, thanks to Susan Christoffersen and her team. At our last meeting, I shared not only is Omaha Public Schools expanding access to advanced academics, but we are elevating supports. So many young people are prepared and confident when each semester begins. That began with AP Bootcamp and AP Workshop for students who have never taken an advanced placement course this summer. Tonight, and thank you to all of the teachers who agreed to participate in not just that, but all of the kinds of activities where we have going on, whether it's band, whether it was fame that happened at UNO, all of the sports activities we have going on, science camps, robotics camps, all kinds of things that were going on throughout the summer. We cannot do it without our dedicated staff, so we certainly appreciate you and for our parents for making sure their young people continue to learn during the summer. Tonight, we will also provide an update on staffing for the school year. As you can imagine, it has been an intense effort on staffing. I know that Mr. Wakefield is going to do a briefing on that in a little bit, and also share some information that, updated information from Saturday's, oh gosh, open house for staffing at, that was held during Benson Days. Our community may recall messages in June sharing our plans to build schedules and classroom assignments. We thank our current staff, excuse me, who rise through these challenges, our human resources team for their relentless work, and we welcome new staff joining the Omaha Public Schools community. Look forward to seeing our brand-new teachers tomorrow at Buena Vista at 8:00 tomorrow. We are moving forward together. That concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Mr. Head?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman, and I feel like it's been a while since we've, since I've been in here with everybody, so glad to, glad to be back. I apologize, I missed the July Board meeting. I've had a number of folks reach out and ask why I wasn't there, how I would have voted, all that fun stuff. I was actually in Ghana, in West Africa, for a work trip during the July meeting, and actually, one of the things I was supposed to do over there, unfortunately, it didn't work out, was I was going to be meeting with their Minister of Education. They're setting up a gifted and talented education program for the country, and I was going to be able to share a little bit of what OPS is doing in that regard. So thank you to Susan Christoffersen and also our gate facilitator, Beth Maloney, for taking some time out of their busy schedules and meeting with me before I left, so that I could at least somewhat sound like I knew what I was talking about when I was over there. But actually, it turns out, the Minister of Education from Ghana and some of his staff is going to be in Nebraska in October. I talked with Dr. Logan a little bit last week, and hopefully, in October, we'll be able to welcome them to OPS and, you know, kind of show them what we do. I know we've got a number of students who've gone in dissent in, in the district, so hopefully, that'll be a good opportunity. Let's see, last week, Ms. Juarez and I both had the opportunity to go to a student intern celebration, celebrating all of our high school interns that worked for Next Level Learning. So thank you to, and I apologize, I'm going to butcher her name, Jane Luthke? Is that it? Perfect, that was close. All right, so thank you to Jane Luthke for facilitating that, putting that on. It was a great, great celebration, awesome being able to celebrate all of our student interns that we had. And let's see, that is actually about all that I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Ms. Cracky?
I just wanted to point out, our dual enrollment at UNO, what a bargain that is. It's like 75,000, and it would have been how much money? I don't have that piece of paper with me. Was it 1,400 or whatever to take a class? Right, it was just, so please look that up and take advantage of it, and you can probably shift that, those credits over to another school. So if you have an opportunity to do that, take it, because you're going to save yourself a lot of money. And then I wanted to talk about what I always seem to talk about. I was hoping that there was enough time before all of our cards went out, with our parents filling them in according to the address and the phone number, and I would like to have us have a little slot on there to check if you are going to answer the phone, or change your phone number, and give it to us, or come for conferences, or let us reach out to you, because there's nothing more important than our getting involved with our parents and them getting involved with us. And it'll help us off, the children will finish their homework. I just can't stress enough how important that is, and maybe that some teachers are reaching out to you by phone call, and I hope that they are, because it's always nice to know you have already visited with them, and they know they can reach you. I always just gave them my phone number, because I didn't mind doing that. Someone else might mind, and so don't do it that way, but I found that to be very helpful. They didn't really call me, but I would call them again, or at least I knew I talked to them. So I want to encourage everybody to do that, and that's my big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cracky. Anyone else? Vice President Erdenberger?
Actually, Ms. Cracky stole my thunder. I was going to mention Item H2 and H19, both of which deal with our OPS students getting credits on the UNO campus or through UNO, which is, of course, a remarkable opportunity for our, for our students, and to preview that we will be having a high school that's partnering with Metro, and they will be, that, that program will be launching next fall, I believe. So we're doing a lot through OPS to prepare our students for success in college, career, and life. The other thing, I was just going to follow up on what Dr. Logan said, and President Holman and I both attended the, the opening ceremony, if you will, this morning, for the, the leadership, all of the principals, vice principals, assistant deans, program leaders, all of the above, and as a former teacher, and as most of you were probably avid former students, there is nothing better than the beginning of the school year, and to see hundreds of people excited about getting back to their buildings and opening them up and welcoming the new teachers next Monday is just very invigorating and just validates everything that we're accomplishing. And speaking of new teachers, their welcome is tomorrow morning. I remember those days, so that's exciting. Thank you.
Are they coming to this building to be...?
Thank you, Vice President Erdenberger. Anyone else? Great. Moving on now to public comment. Tonight, we have three speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual... Everybody check their mics, please, thank you. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray, and he will make sure that each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB83, by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization that you may represent, unless a requirement is waived for security reasons. We do not have any requests for tonight, but we do have an OPS student that will be speaking tonight. In addition, we ask that you remain in your seat until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come get them from you. It is now 6:17 p.m., and our first speaker is Edgar. One second, he did a phenomenal job this morning. Just need some assistance with his last name.
Delced Lutin.
Delced Lutin. Good evening, Edgar. So great to have you here this evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Greetings. Let me start out by saying thank you to the Omaha Public Schools.
Edgar, I'm sorry, can I just have you to state and spell your first and last name? You do not have to give your address, though.
Edgar Delced Lutin.
Spell it for us, please.
E-D-G-A-R, first name, last name D-E-L, space C-I-D, space L-U-T-I-N. Okay, thank you. Greetings. Let me start out by saying thank you to the Omaha Public Schools for having me today here to be able to talk to you. I really appreciate it. I'm Edgar Delced Lutin, and I'm currently a rising junior at Omaha South High, and I'm entering the 11th grade as a proud graduate of Spring Lake Elementary and Morris Middle School. During COVID-19, I thought about life and wanted to make improvements on my education. Teachers would encourage me to remotely continue on, and no matter what, and to not let the pandemic take me down. I know some of my friends struggle through the process of remote learning, and teachers as well, but they always put a grindset to never give up. That is what motivated me to continue on and strive for my goals of changing the world with an app. Omaha, Omaha South High continues to provide me the opportunities to help me reach my next goal, a Stanford University. I'm always enthusiastic to start the school year, because I know that teachers will put, will be sure to put a positive mindset towards their day. I admire teachers because of the impact they make on students throughout their career. Teachers go way beyond the work of teaching content, helping students excel in any way, shape, or form possible, even if that is outside of school. Teachers will be there no matter what, and that is why, what I and peers value. Coming from a family background, where my parents never had the opportunity to have an education, I have been taught to be grateful for it, and cherish those teachers and moments of school that will hopefully become the best learner you can be. Since my childhood in elementary school and middle school, I would have periods of time where my parents would refer to me as, unquote, "the bad kid." As my parents would tell me, and I recognize it now, but there was always a teacher there, no matter what, to help me calm down and focus and make the best out of my day, and I now recognize, even though they may have had their own problems and issues going on, they were there for us students. No friend will understand your circumstances like a teacher or staff member does. I reflected upon it, and just wanted to say that I'm thankful for all the work teachers and staff members and faculty do every day. Just know that if you did not existed, there would not be doctors, engineers, or nurses around the world. You all are the ones getting us there, and know we value your work. So I'm not saying every student is always grateful or attentive, but be proud that you are an educator, a faculty member. You are stepping up to the challenge, and know that there are students like us that adore you for everything you do. If it wasn't for those educators, that some students might refer to as, "Oh, so annoying, making us learn, do all this homework, taking us to the office, I can't do this anymore," we would not be on the pathway to a betterment or future success. That is why I want every educator that I see to know that you are the spark, that's how, you are the spark that's helping students be the light for the future. Every student has a light to be lit. Even though it might seem impossible at times, every student, it is not, and you can work to find the potential every student has, knowing you are the ones laying out the foundation, and you stepped up to it. Now, it's time to accomplish it. I want to personally thank you again, educators, for just being you, because no matter what, you will always be there for us students. We students also see your work, but we sometimes don't show it, but we have it inside of us. Thank you for never giving up on us students, and have an amazing 2022, 2023 school year, Omaha Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. We do have many educators in the audience today, so I hope that this message touched your heart, and hopefully, those that are watching livestream, I hope that it touched you and brought you joy as well. Sorry. Next, tonight, we have Kathy Poehling. Good evening.
I don't know how I can follow that. Kathy Poehling, K-A-T-H-Y-P-O-E-H-L-I-N-G, and my address is 8135 South 50th Circle. And Edgar, thank you, and from every educator, thank you. That's what we all need to hear and be reminded of all the time. So I'm here today, not for concerns, which is what I usually come for, but for a thank you to Dr. Logan. I don't know how many of the Board members know, but her and I were in a meeting just a few months ago, and I asked her for three things for the teachers. I asked her for a change in the transfer process, which I'm hoping she's working on. I, I asked her for help for teachers when they have situations in their classrooms, and they just need to be out for 10 minutes to pull themselves back together after an incident happens in their classroom, so that we can get re-grounded and go back to the classroom and teach and be the best teacher that we can be. And the third thing was I asked her to put together a task force for staff morale, because I know how I was feeling, and I know how the other teachers were feeling. We were feeling like there was no hope left, and I talked to the Board about this last year. And I am very happy to say that the task force has been meeting, and I went to one of the meetings today. It was fabulous. They're working on a plan to help build staff morale, but I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Logan. Thank you for taking my suggestions seriously and moving forward with the task force. I, I appreciate that you listened to teachers and that you took action, so thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, tonight, we have John Conkle. Good evening, Mr. Kunkel.
Hi, my name is John Kunkel, J.O.H.N.K.U.N.K.E.L. I live at five-one-two-seven Pratt Street, six-eight-one-zero-four. Do you need anything else? Is that it? Okay. I'll start my watch here. I've written things down so I can cover everything. First of all, to you, our dedicated School Board members, and our wonderful and accomplished Superintendent Dr. Logan, we are so fortunate to have you guiding our school system. I feel I need to apologize for after-last meeting's thinly veiled racist commentary on the state of our schools and the apparent unwillingness to pay Dr. Logan what she is undoubtedly worth. Roughly calculated an estimate based on an estimate of a minimum of a hundred thousand property taxpayers. Each one of our contributions through taxes would be around two dollars a year, so even the poorest among us can afford this. Last meeting, I submitted a couple of proposals to every Board member except Dr. Logan. I didn't give you one. Would you like one? Well, I'll give it to you in a minute. Regarding later start times and student-led conflict resolution, replacing the current punishments for student misbehavior, punitive punishments, I should say. I sincerely hope that you've read and found value in these proposals. For those of you parents who are watching, and teachers, administrators, everyone who's interested in the fates of our children and their futures and their futures, and in ensuring a peaceful and meaningful educational experience, I suggest you can do a Google search for student-led peer mediation, and also for later start times for middle and high school students. I think you'll be amazed at the scientific research that you will find to back this up. As a bus driver, it's simply not possible to implement anything close to this kind of resolution because of time constraints, which are even made worse by COVID's impact affecting us with doubled and sometimes tripled routes. You parents who are watching, I feel your frustration. The only resolution for us that I can see is to both hire more drivers and increase the compensation for those of us who continue to stick it out despite the doubling and sometimes tripling of our workloads. The Board has agreed to pay a stipend of forty-five hundred dollars to full-time employees of the district and twenty-two fifty for part-timers. As an employee who is dedicated to doing the best possible job for your students, I hope that you understand the impossible situation we are in. Longtime employees of STA who I work for are quitting, and students are stressed out and more prone to impulsive destructive actions. All the while, we are trying our best to keep them safe and respectful of one another. We feel that we deserve the same recognition as OPS bus drivers who the district has recognized and rewarded. It would certainly help keeping our stressed drivers from quitting. In addition, another contracted company for student has raised their starting wage to twenty-one dollars an hour versus our eighteen eighty-five dollars an hour, with a two-thousand-dollar hiring bonus versus our twelve-hundred-dollar bonus. I'm told they are a richer company, but perhaps if school district could be convinced to stop assessing a hundred fifty percent penalty of what a route being doubled and tripled sometimes, all the while meeting time constraints, STA could afford to raise our wages in our current nine percent inflationary times, more than the zero-point-eight percent that we currently received due to the contract. Parents, students, and concerned citizens, if you agree, please let your School Board member know. Thank you.
One minute.
Further, I'd like to back up a little bit. I know Dr. Logan has been through a lot. I lived in Philadelphia for a few years during the late seventies during the dictatorial reign of Frank Rizzo and his mobbed-up city council members. And it was awful. And the schools looked like prisons with with wire cages covering high windows. And I just felt so bad for those kids, you know, and I'm sure Dr. Logan had made an impact in that environment. And I really appreciate Dr. Logan. I think we all owe our gratitude, and all of you as well. The other thing, I've got a few seconds. I'd like everyone to try to to look up and get involved in student-led mediation of conflict because that would encourage these problem students who have an impact I'm sorry, just a second. On classrooms, teachers, bus drivers, everyone.
Thanks for being here tonight. Moving on now to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Tealyn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Head. Any abstentions? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Yes.
Crackey. Crackey.
Oh, turn your mic. Aye.
Thank you. Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Six A.
Motion carries. Moving on now to action items. Item I-one-A, approval of first reading of policies fifty-one oh-one, fifty-four oh-eight, fifty-four oh-nine, fifty-four twelve, fifty-four fourteen, fifty-four fifteen, and fifty-four seventeen. And tonight, we have Mr. Tealyn speaking.
Good evening. So we had these on, the information item. Ms. Erdenberger was kind enough to be in my stead while I was absent and get them through as an information item. Tonight, they're on for first reading and certainly entertain any further questions we have about those policies. Seeing none, I will move that we pass these on first reading. And I believe no second is necessary.
No second. Nope. It's nine. Okay. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Juarez.
Yes.
Crackey.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Six A.
Motion carries. Moving on now, thank you so much, Mr. Tealyn. Moving on now to information items. We have item I-two-A, Fall two thousand twenty-two Staffing Update. And tonight, we have the pleasure of the wonderful Mr. Wakefield, just because he loves attention so much. Good evening, Mr. Wakefield.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Dr. Logan, Board members. It's my pleasure this evening to share with you a staffing update for both certified and classified staff as we begin the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. It's important to note that we've done a lot of work, but we're still not where we need to be a hundred percent. We've had our great H.R. team work diligently with our principals. Our principals have worked outstanding with us, but most importantly, our teachers and staff have worked with us. We recognize that our district is built upon the staff that make everything work, and our staff continue to work with us because they recognize the importance of having an outstanding educational environment for each and every student. Tonight, I will walk through some of the numbers that we have and share with you an update with staffing as we go. Looking at it from a big picture, the initial standpoint on certified or teaching staff overview. At the elementary level, we are currently just over ninety-six percent filled out of our over two thousand positions. We currently have fifteen unfilled regular ed classroom positions, and actually, that number is wrong. As of three P.M. tonight, it's fourteen. We hired one today. So continuing to work to fill those. We do have sixty-three unfilled special ed or support positions as well. I do want to note that we have scheduled eighty-four elementary positions as unfilled. These are positions we actively chose not to fill as we begin to raise class sizes to address our staffing needs. Those eighty-four positions are not in that percentage because we did not feel like it was transparent to include them. Including them as filled would show our filled rate higher than it actually is. Including them as unfilled would show our filled rate lower than it actually is. At the secondary level, we again are just over ninety-six percent filled out of roughly two thousand positions. Nine and a half unfilled classroom positions at this point, and sixty-six unfilled special ed or support positions. And again, we have scheduled seventy-five positions as unfilled at the secondary level. To put this in perspective, pre-pandemic, this time of school year, we would be just under ninety-nine percent filled to start the school year. So while ninety-six does look very good at this point, it is below what we typically are. It is easy to hide numbers or hide vacancies and concerns in staffing in the big numbers of the district. We have over four thousand teachers. We have over seventy-five hundred staff across the district. And the Board recognized this a couple of years ago when we developed a strategic plan. And due to that, we developed a strategic plan around the idea that every school was ninety-five percent staffed, not the district as a whole, so that we provided an outstanding educational activity for each and every student at every school, regardless of where they went to school at. So as we look at staffing on the certified staff under those criteria, you will see that we are not quite where we want to be, but we are definitely making progress as we move forward. At the elementary level, we have twenty-eight schools that are now a hundred percent staffed. Just under half of our elementary schools are a hundred percent staffed. An additional twenty-four schools are above ninety-five percent staffed. We have nine schools between that ninety and ninety-four percent range, and only four schools below that ninety. Again, sometimes numbers can, percentages can hide facts. Ponca has six classroom teachers because of its size. If they were short one teacher, they would fall under ninety percent staff because of how percentages work. So as I look at this, we have four elementary schools that have one classroom teacher vacancy. We have three elementary schools that have two, and I'm sorry, there's a mistake. Because of our three o'clock hire, we have four schools that have two vacancies, and we have none that have more than two at the elementary level. So looking at our regular ed classrooms, we have the vast majority of our regular ed classroom positions filled. At the secondary level, we have two schools a hundred percent filled. We have fourteen above the ninety-five percent. We have four ninety to ninety-four, and we have one that is below ninety percent filled. That one is heavily impacted by special ed vacancies at that elementary school. But we do have one school with one vacancy at secondary, two schools, or one school with two vacancies, and one school with more than two vacancies as we go. Now, these numbers look good, and as we look at this, not meeting our strategic plan, but definitely making progress and definitely progress over where we were two months ago. But I do want to recognize this is because our staff has stepped up, because we have asked staff to go back into classrooms. We have prioritized classrooms and educational experience, and we have asked staff in some aspects to do more, to see more kids, to do more things, to work with more. And so I do need to recognize that because our staff have recognized that importance and have been very supportive and understanding of that and want to support and help us. We've had sixty-five teachers reassigned from this building, from central office, in support roles back into the classroom, going back into a classroom that they may have not have been in in the last four, five, ten years in some cases, but they recognize the importance of working with staff each and every day and working with kids each and every day so that we provide an outstanding educational environment as we go. One of the concerns we continually hear from our teachers and we agree with is the loss of planned time, the lack of time to support planning because of lack of substitutes. In fact, the substitute shortage predates the staffing shortage. It was our first indicator of a staffing shortage. So when we look at staffing, we also need to look at our substitute pool. We currently have just over a thousand teachers in our substitute pool, with about fifty to seventy-five more coming onboard. That thousand teachers is a variety of teachers, some willing to work one or two days a month, some willing to work five days a week. On average, we expect about a third of these subs to work any given day as we go throughout the school year. Do you note this number will fluctuate heavily? We hire our subs in the classrooms as they become willing to do that and as we see the need and fill with them. We also continually hire substitute teachers. This fifty to seventy-five number is there because we still have some of our substitute teachers getting their local sub-license. We still have some of our substitute teachers going through background checks and variety hiring processes to ensure that we have outstanding adults in front of each and every one of our kids. But this number of one thousand gives us some comfort in that we will be able to provide some planned time to teachers. Now, does that mean that every teacher will always get their planned time? No. There are going to be situations where teachers will have to give up planned time to cover for an absent teacher. But this puts us in a much better situation than we were last year at this time. We also have hired over four hundred new teachers for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. To put this in perspective, we averaged three hundred and seventy new teachers a year for the past several years. So we've hired more than we have in the past, and that's a good thing, especially since we started recruiting a little bit later this year. Our recruiting position in H.R. went unfilled in fall semester for a variety of reasons, and that slowed down some of our recruiting, and we didn't actively, we didn't provide full focus on recruiting until second semester. Four hundred new teachers is a fabulous number for us. You can see how those are split between elementary and secondary. It does not always work out that they are that close. I had them triple-check the numbers for me. I didn't believe it when I first saw it. So we did go back and do that. As both Ms. Erdenberger and Dr. Logan mentioned, we do have new teacher induction this week as we begin to assist our new teachers as they come into the school district and support them moving forward. Additionally, because of the Board's work last spring and providing a stipend of nine thousand dollars to all student teachers, we were able to hire sixty-six percent of our student teachers last year. That is outstanding. We typically hire about half of our student teachers. And note that the fifty student teachers who got the stipend last year, student taught with us before they knew about the stipend. They found out about that after the fact. And because of that stipend, we have more than doubled that number for the fall semester. We have just over a hundred student teachers this fall, including seventy-five at the elementary level, eighteen at the secondary level, and sixteen that are splitting time between both levels. That would potentially be an art teacher, a P.E. teacher, or a special ed teacher who gets that K-12 licensure. If we continue to hire about half of our student teachers, that's fifty new teachers that semester that will be coming onboard to help us as we begin to fill classrooms and do a variety of things. However, we're not going to be satisfied with just fifty. We're going to do a full-court press to attract and retain our student teachers. From a kickoff that we are getting ready to host here in a couple of weeks, including Dr. Logan, to regular communication and job offers from the very beginning to encourage them to come work with us. Additionally, we initiated our first Teacher Scholars Academy with U N O. this fall. So we have an initial cohort of twenty-five high school seniors, graduating high school seniors, college freshmen, entering the Teacher Scholar Academy with the intent on becoming an OPS teacher. In fact, part of their scholarship is they have agreed service to OPS at the end of their four years of college to become a teacher. That initial cohort of twenty-five is fabulous. It includes both OPS students, but as well as students from the metro area, so across the metro region. Certified staff is about half of our staffing, and we know and recognize the importance of teachers each and every day. But we also recognize the importance of everyone around that teacher supporting them, from that pair in that classroom to the nutrition service staff, to the custodian, to the electrician, to the plumber, who support our staff as they work to support our kids each and every day. So I've included our staffing numbers for our major classified groups here. School-based classified staff, this would include paras, office personnel, security. We are about seventy-seven percent staffed. Nutrition services is about seventy-seven, bus drivers eighty-two to eighty-eight, depending on the job, and operations, which would be primarily custodial, eighty-six percent staffed. These numbers are much lower than we would like, but this is the time of year that our classified staffing numbers are the lowest. Our ten-month classified staff tell us they're not coming back to work in August. They are unsure about their health insurance, and they want to wait until their health insurance runs through before they tell us. So this is very common this time of year, and this is when we do most of our hiring for our classified staff. So while these numbers are lower than we would like, we are not surprised that this is the lowest point of the year for these numbers. Again, those numbers can hide individual issues, so we begin to look at it by school. So these are our paras, our security officers, and our office personnel as we look at school-based classified staff. And you can see where we sit at this point. Sixteen schools at the elementary level over ninety percent. Nineteen schools are between eighty and eighty-nine, seventeen between seventy and seventy-nine, and thirteen schools below sixty-nine percent filled. And if we look at the secondary, we see a very similar pattern there. I do want to caution you in getting caught up with the percents. If a school has three school-based classified staff- If a school has three school-based classified staff, a secretary, a security guard, and a para, like some of our small elementary schools do, and we have one of those positions unfilled, they're sixty-six percent filled. So the, the size of the school does matter in some of these cases, and again, we tend to have less classified staff in buildings than we do in certified buildings. That said, we are actively recruiting for those classified staff members right now. On July seventh, we hosted an afternoon, early evening job fair and made seventy-two offers onsite. Dr. Logan highlighted our Benson High job fair. I won't call you out for calling it an open house in public, or maybe I will. So Benson High, we tie that to Benson Days, trying to draw traffic off Benson Days. We were also in the parade to advertise ourselves. And we hired, and I want to give you the real number, seventy-three candidates on Saturday in classified positions, including twenty-seven paras, one of our harder-to-fill positions at this point, and fifteen custodians. We'll have some additional offers come out of that, as we did over eighty-five interviews that day, but seventy-three job offers were made. Additionally, we have billboards across the city advertising to come work for OPS, to attract people to check us out and figure out something. And we've included something new called a new hire spotlight. Social media is the king of recruiting right now. And so to encourage staff to come work in OPS, we provided each of our principals a Twitter slide, I don't know what to call it, I'm not a social media person, I'm sorry, with a new hires picture and a little bit of job information and facts about them, so each school can tweet out about their new hires to draw attention. Our hope is that that person likes that tweet, and then their network sees it, and their friends like it, and expands exponentially, and people see great news about OPS. That's how you recruit in social media. Additionally, we're continuing to look into recruiting for the future. The world has changed. Job market has changed. People have choices. We know that. We have to attract people. How we do that looks different. So we are looking at, in addition to doing the seventy to eighty job fairs we do every year for certified staff, in addition to doing the ten to twenty classified job fairs we do every year for staff, in addition to the online job boards, job posting boards we do all the time for staff, we're setting up a text recruiting platform. This allows us to begin to interact with candidates once they make initial contact with us and provide us a cellphone number and permission, and begin to text them. We find many of our classified staff only use their phones to fill out applications and work with us, and texting is the best way to get ahold of them. We currently do not have a single platform that can text hundreds of people at one time, so we're working with district communications on setting that up in the future as we begin to increase that communication, because good recruiting is about good communication. Additionally, we're looking at something called location-based advertising. This is, I'm not quite sure how to explain this, I'll be very honest. Basically, this looks at where you go, what you search on Google, if you've turned stuff on, or if you walk into places, and it sends you ads based on those stores. So if you walk into Gap over the weekend and have stuff turned on, you begin seeing Gap ads pop up in your feeds. That's location-based advertising. We can use that for recruiting. So someone who searches a teaching job in Kansas City, we can begin popping to them Omaha jobs to look at. Someone that visits our school, we can begin popping that, or searches our school, we can begin popping them job ads to be a classified or certified employee. New, very new, but it's, again, using social media as our friend to begin to advertise and do things. I'm seeing some looks there, so. Well, we'll see when Dr. Logan starts getting all the job announcements on her phone, how supportive that is, so. The, the short story today is, compared to two months ago, we're in a much better place. We are not perfect. Teachers have more challenging times this year than they had, had in the past. They will have slightly larger class sizes. We've had the scheduled positions unfilled, but every child will start the school year with a teacher in their classroom. Every child will have a teacher, and that, that is our goal. We want an outstanding educational experience for every child regardless of where they go to school, and we're going to meet that goal. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wakefield. When you talked about the location-based advertising, I never knew that that's what that was called, but you know, when you shop online or you're buying gifts and then your significant other, whoever you're buying the gift for sees it pop up or whatever, so it'd be interesting to see if someone's considering making a job, a job change, and then their partner sees through that advertisement. But thank you so much for the information. I have a couple of questions that I'm going to start off with. Can you quickly share a description of the difference between local subs and teacher subs, in case someone that's listening might be interested and not sure which one they should apply for?
Absolutely. A teacher substitute is someone who is fully licensed by the state of Nebraska with a teaching certificate. They've gone through a teacher of education program, either have taught or have chosen not to taught or being a substitute instead. A local sub is someone that the Omaha Public Schools has approved to be a substitute for them. They typically do not have a background in education. Typically, they have a college degree or at least a certain number of college hours, and we, as a district, say that we're willing to put them in front of our students as a substitute. Tonight on the consent agenda, the board approved local sub option again, as they do every year for us. It is a great option, especially in some of our more unique programs. Think construction, think culinary arts, some of those programs that require a skillset that may be a little bit different than our standard, our traditional teacher path has gone through. They make outstanding substitutes in those areas.
Thank you. Also, you talked about the Teacher Scholars Academy, and I believe I know this is to be for graduating seniors who are interested in going into education. I know that we, it's been presented to us many times, the different, excuse me, the different programming that's available. Are there any other programs that you can share with the public, again, for those who may be interested in going into teaching but not sure what to do, that you may have a partnership with the university for those folks to possibly go into teaching?
There are several, and I'll highlight a few. The Grandaddy Program is our para educator program that's been around for fifteen to twenty years, and that is current OPS para educators who have two years of college under their belt. The district works with the support of local funders to provide the last two years of their colleges to become teachers. So they're employed as a para with us, getting full benefits of that position, getting the experience, the para to count towards their degree, and then getting that great degree and beginning to teach with us. We also work with University of Nebraska-Karney on transition to teaching program. These are your non-traditional teachers who come in, they typically have a degree and experience in another field, for example, accounting. And they come and decide they want to be a teacher, and while they teach for us, they go back to school through University of Karney to finish out that transitional certificate. Typically, we see these in high schools and college and career pathway type courses. The last one I would highlight is called TAP, Teacher Academy Program. I probably said that wrong, and someone's going to get mad at me. TAP is through UNO, and those are, again, an alternative certification program, individuals that have significant life experience and job experience in a certain area. They come and they serve as a para for a semester to a year, working with the district, gaining experience with students while they're taking classes at UNO, and then they move into a teaching program with you, with us.
Great, thank you for sharing those. And I did want to also add that recruitment is certainly strong. I've seen a couple of billboards across the city, the big ones up in the, in our colors, which look beautiful up in the skyline. But then also, I was updating my daughter's online registration information. There's even recruitment in there that's asking about the parents, hey, are you interested in working, looking for a job? Go ahead and click this button. So it's everywhere, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we, we have no shame.
Not at all. Thank you, Mrs. Crackey.
I think this is the most exciting information we have gotten from someone standing at the podium for quite a long time, just very excited about it. It almost looks like there's something for everyone if you're willing to do something. And the paras, again, they had a hard time this summer because they weren't included in the raises, and so I hope the person that negotiates for them, or they will get on the person and get going so that that looks better for them as they go forward. And on security, I saw something, they were complaining why one school had so many security guards, and that's because they have so many, many entrances, and you do want the school to be safe, you do want everyone's safety uppermost in your mind. So that has a lot to do with how many security officers are at different schools. And I did see the part in Omaha World here about UNO new hires, and I did see the billboard about that, and I was so excited. You know, what else? How about radio? Did we do that?
We are exploring radio ads for transportation right now and nutrition services. We're still in development of what that, what the actual script is for that ad.
And maybe those people that do the talk shows would let you come on and discuss that with them, too.
Hopefully, we'll find somebody other than me, but yes.
Yeah. Oh, oh, no, you did a good job tonight, and you knew all the parts and pieces, so I think you're the one to go.
Ms. Crackey, I know that you would love to hear Mr. Wakefield, but I actually will be on, on the tenth and on the fifteenth. The tenth, I forgot the station, so I apologize, and on the fifteenth, and I will be doing a plug for recruiting as well. So I'm sorry it won't be Mr. Wakefield, but I'll be a dirty second.
Okay, Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. Thank you for the, for the presentation, for the information. I really appreciate it. And one thing, whenever I'm talking with somebody about kind of staff recruitment and where we are, one of the things I can never emphasize enough is the, the forward-thinking approach that Dr. Logan, yourself, Ms. Kristofferson, Dr. McFarland, I'm not really sure who deserves the credit, probably all of you, put in place by having a teacher academy or pathway at all of the nine high schools, and hiring high school students to facilitate or teach next-level learning, you know, with the, the idea of being able to identify students who would be good teachers, and hopefully get them to come back and work for the district, or paying, you know, paying student teachers, again, with the idea of getting them to come work for us after they graduate. And I, I just can't say enough good things about the forward-thinking approach we've taken to at least hiring and recruiting quality teachers for the district, so, you know, thank you to everyone for their work on that. I have two questions and maybe a little bit of follow-up for you. So with the adjustment to the average class sizes for this upcoming school year, what was the, what was the change in the number of teaching positions that we are going to need this school year compared to last?
So that would go back to the positions we put on hold. So we scheduled eighty-four elementary positions as unfilled, so those were eighty, the eighty-four positions we used to adjust class sizes. Some of those positions were also non-classroom teachers as we moved non-classroom teachers back into classrooms. And we scheduled seventy-five secondary positions as unfilled. So if I'm doing my math right, that's about a hundred and sixty-four. I'm sure someone will correct my math at some point. Sixty-nine? Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
And so the, with the, listing the positions as unfilled, they're still technically there, so going forward, we can fill those positions and bring those teachers back online and bring class sizes down, all that.
Yeah, absolutely. We, if we can fill that semester, definitely. If not, we're going to continue to try to fill those for next year as we move forward.
Perfect. And then you had mentioned, I think it was sixty-five individuals from the TAC building that are now in the schools teaching. Are those, are those individuals full-time in the schools, or are they kind of splitting their time between doing their, their job in TAC in the schools, or how, how does that work?
Quick answer is yes. Both. It depends on the position and the person. We have some that went back full-time in the classrooms because that was a positional need and the student need. We had some that went back less than full-time because of the position need, and also because some of the work at TAC still needed to be done, managing, non-pub tutors, those sorts of things.
Perfect. And then I think you probably answered my follow-up, but the, the folks who are going to be full-time in the schools, what's the, I'd imagine you have a process in place to replace them in TAC or get somebody part-time until we can bring them back to the TAC building to do their, do their job full-time here?
Everything is going to be based on student need, building need. So we will replace, we will fill positions that either have a long-term sub, or someone that's not fully licensed for that position first. We are allowed to have a certain number of teachers out of licensure area, and we did work with a little bit with that. Second, we will fill positions that free up building-based staff who support teachers. We, we have some deans, some curriculum specialists, some ifs, who are teaching classes as well, maybe not all day, some all day, some part-day, but we want to free them back up because that provides important support for those teachers. So unfortunately, that means our TAC-based staff in most cases will be last to return because we want to make sure that our students have that outstanding educational experience.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Ms. Suarez?
Thank you very much. Mr. Wakefield, I really would like to thank your staff for all of the hard work that they've been doing so far. I mean, I, because we were so stressed out, you know, a couple of months ago with the numbers that we had, and it's just tremendous, this change that has happened. I mean, I realize that we still have a lot of positions to fill, but it's just very optimistic, I think, how things are going, and I know they're going to continue to work hard to get our needs met, but I want them to know how much that, sincerely, we appreciate it. I also wanted to offer, at my house, I have a wonderful fence that I would love to put a banner on.
Okay.
And I would even be willing to pay for it if it's a budget issue, to advertise, to try to hire folks, because I'm on a busy street, so a lot of people could see it. And I'm also hoping that we're going to resolve the issue of the loss of planned time for the teachers, that somehow we're going to get this worked out in the future, and, because I know that that's important to them. And way down the road, again, I am hoping that we're going to be able to increase salaries in the future for our teachers. I'm very supportive of that, and hopefully that will help us down the road in hiring more, and we'll just see what happens in the next negotiations, and hopefully that will be positive also to help us with hirings of teachers. Thank you very much.
And I, I do believe the board approved tonight the, the stipends for forty-five-hundred dollars for almost all of our groups. I will be very honest, we have been telling individuals that that was coming for a while now, so we did get in front of you just a little bit on that, but it has been very helpful.
Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. First, thank you for this obviously large effort in filling these gaps, very important work, and I appreciate your diligence in continuing to press. Couple of questions. First, the eighty-four and seventy-five positions that we put on hold, how has that changed, if at all, since we talked a couple of months ago? Is that pretty much the number that we started with, or have we added or subtracted from that?
The changes have been minor, probably a little bit more at elementary as we looked at non-classroom teachers and trying to fill positions, so we had a teacher in every classroom. And some of that fluctuates as we hired as well. As I mentioned, we hired an art teacher today, which was outstanding because our teachers are hard to find right now, so that's been very helpful for us as well.
Okay. I think I asked this maybe last year. We've, say we still have some positions that are unfilled, ninety-six percent, right, is filled, that's four percent that's unfilled. What does it mean to have a position that's unfilled and there's, you know, where does that student go for their, how do we get that person in the classroom?
We're still working, we still have fifteen, sixteen, seventeen days, so we're still working both to hire teachers, but also we use long-term subs in many of those cases, or we work with a building principal and see if they can make adjustments. We've mentioned reassignments in schools and from TAC and between schools, and some of those reassignments were between schools. That will still continue, not as heavy as it did back in June, but our enrollment projections are just that, projections. And we always have to compare that to the number of students that actually show up, and sometimes we're smack-on, actually, more often than not, we're smack-on, but sometimes we're off, and we have to make adjustments. That means we may have to shift a teacher to cover larger-than-expected enrollment at a school, or shift a teacher to accommodate smaller-than-enrollment at a school. Kindergarten is probably the hardest for us to project.
Sure. Mr. Head hit my question about support from our TAC staff. So classified staff, if you can go back to that slide. We've talked a lot about certified staff and how the numbers have compared from year to year. This helps us understand kind of what are, what we're shooting for and how close we are to those targets, but how do those numbers compare to last year? Are we, are, have we filled more positions, or are we at a higher percentage, a lower percentage?
Both, in some ways. We, we have almost doubled the number of classified hires this year compared to last year.
Okay.
But these percentages are lower than they were last year, and are lower than average. We would, in school-based staff, I'm going to skip over, but nutrition services usually average around eighty-two to eighty-four percent. but nutrition services usually average around 82 to 84%. Bus drivers would set around 85. Operations staff would be 92 to 94%. School-based staff varies slightly, and we've done some significant changes over several years with that. So that's a little bit harder for us to have historical trends on.
Sure. Okay. That's really all I have. Again, thank you for this work.
Vice President Erdnberger.
Thank you, President Holman. Not in any particular order, but since this slide is up, anybody who still signs up will be eligible for the $4,500 stipend. What's the deadline for being employed for the full amount? And then we've broken it up, so.
So the deadline is by the division. So that $4,500 for full-time or half of it for half-time is three payments. So an individual who is onboard, I think August 18th or 19th is our cutoff date, will get the September stipend. And there's a cutoff date early November for that December stipend. And I'm sorry, I don't have those in front of me. They're in the MOUs we did. But, so an individual joining at any time and working on or by that date would get that stipend.
So if they get in, sign up between now and whatever, August 16, 17, the full $4,500 would presumably be available to them.
Yeah. We expect all of our new hires from Saturday to get the full stipend.
Excellent. I think you already mentioned this, but I just wanted to confirm. In addition to TAC personnel being reallocated in some fashion or another, you also mentioned that we're, perhaps deans or curriculum specialists and other school-based people are also being put into the classroom, not necessarily full-time, but that they are taking on some teaching responsibilities as well.
Yeah. School-by-school decision. Each school kind of addressed that slightly differently based on needs and, and certification of who their dean, what certification their dean or curriculum specialist had. But it is truly all hands on deck.
Excellent. And you mentioned that we may have some further teacher reassignments. I know, I'm, I'm sure that that happens every year. We are presumably at this point down to the numbers that are very comparable to the kinds of reassignments that would take place every August as our projections fall short or over what we thought they were supposed to be.
Traditionally, we don't reassign very many secondary teachers because of how schedules are built. We address that at, during staffing conferences and for the next year. Elementary teachers, especially when we look at kindergarten numbers. And then special ed, as we look at caseloads, we get reassignments in both those groups.
So that might still happen, but it's nothing that's particularly different about it this year than usual. With respect to the substitutes, I did want to point out, with an unusually large student-teacher population, you could roughly guesstimate that those supervising teachers could potentially be part of the subpool for that school, right? I mean, does that sort of expand our subnumbers? Not necessarily right off the bat, but long about November or December, when those student-teachers are otherwise taking over classrooms full-time anyway, that sort of moderately expands our subpool for those schools?
Potentially, yes. Each college has slightly different criteria that we do have to make sure that we meet, but it's not uncommon for a cooperating teacher to help out on occasion as we get into later fall, early winter.
I just remember spending a lot of time with the jazz band when I had student teachers, which was, since All I Can Play is On Wisconsin on the trombone was not actually all that helpful. But that's okay. They knew what they were doing. I did have a question about what our numbers looked like compared to how many left and how many we've got, but you've got all those numbers covered in here. Thank you very much. I wanted to get back to the summer student para program, which if I recall correctly, Dr. Logan, when we initiated that last year, we were the only and maybe still are the only school district that has high school students as paras in our summer programs?
I'm, I'm not sure if there are other districts here in Nebraska that have it. We did have representation from 27 schools locally. Some archdiocese schools, independent school, and pretty much every school district in the metro. And we had two students from Lexington, Nebraska, who came to do it, so.
That's really amazing. And I know you mentioned the number this morning. How many of those students, how many of those student paras did we have this summer?
237, if I remember correctly.
That's amazing. Now, if you can mention in two words or less, or maybe a couple more, how do we keep track of those kids? Like last year's kids, presumably some of them came back this summer. We follow them into college. I mean, this location stalking sounds like a really good way to, maybe each, assign a drone to each one of them to keep track of them.
I, you know, we actually created a position in our strategic plan to do tracking of them. So we're, hopefully, we'll be able to, we're really careful about, we don't want to, because our goal was to actually recruit a teacher with about three to five years' experience to do that because we felt we wanted someone who could relate to our young people. However, we can't afford to pull a teacher out to do that. So that, actually, that strategy to do that is in our strategic plan. And once we have a little bit more relief, perhaps we'll be able to do that. When Ms. Luthke did her presentation, and actually, I think it was Ms. Roseman, Randy Roseman did a presentation on student interns by the number, they actually included that number, like how many had, were repeat from last year, where they were in their educational journey, and so on and so forth. So that's certainly something we've already thought about, and hopefully, we'll have staffing in the near future to be able to track that even better. Maybe not stalking, but something close.
We did use our returning student interns from last summer. We held a recruiting competition and gave prizes for those who referred the most additional new students who joined the program.
I love that. Okay. Your slide about new hires at 402 is, of course, wrong because it's now 403. Is that right? I just want to make sure every teacher counts, right? My last question was, in terms of nurturing and building and growing our own, would it be possible for you to tell me how we are, not just recruiting, but encouraging substitute teachers? Do they, do we have any access to them? Do they know the fun stuff that's going on in the school buildings? I know that I have some friends that just stepped out of it for a couple of years here because they didn't want to be in the classrooms because of the health situation. What kinds of things do we do to remind them how fun it is to be a student, a substitute teacher?
So the HR team called every 2020, 2021 retiree, let me get the right year, retiree and encouraged them to sub for us this summer. We also called every resignation from this school year who we knew was not under contract with another school to encourage them to either teach part-time or substitute for us this summer. So we reached out directly and made hundreds of phone calls, talking to individuals. Principals work heavily with subs. Teachers are some of our best recruiters for subs. When Mrs. Doe retires, all of her friends say, "Come sub for me." She eventually gets enough pressure, she does, and we don't mind that. So using our teachers, using our principals. We also strongly encourage our principals, and many of them do a fabulous job of this, of making that sub experience fun and relevant. Subs go to schools where they're respected, where they feel supported, and where they like. And, and so the principal that creates, the staff that creates that environment gets more subs. And so we actively talk to principals about what that looks like and how they can do things. Simple things from a thank-you card or a thank-you note to, we see very extravagant things like candy bars and Landers and a whole variety of things.
I think Dr. Logan mentioned donuts this morning, so that may be part of it, too. My final comment is, I don't want to lose track of the fact that you've been wearing two hats all summer. And notwithstanding the fact that this is a really encouraging report about where we are with staffing and all of the work you and your staff had to go through to rebuild schedules and all of that, to come as close as we possibly can to getting a certified teacher in every classroom for every student, you are also opening four fabulous buildings. I know that you are wearing both of those hats. And so while we are encouraged by the staffing report, I think, I think I can speak for everybody that we are beyond impressed with how gorgeous our new buildings are and how fun it's going to be to welcome students into them. So thank you for that work, too. Thank you very much.
I do have two great teams, so they deserve the credit. I just am the one that stands up here sometimes. HR team is a fabulous team and does a great job. Dr. Betts and all the hiring administrators do a great job for us. And then on the operations side, Brad Boganowski, Darwin Rody, I could go down the list that do a great job. We had Tammy Yarman wiping tables today after our luncheon because she was afraid that they wouldn't get wiped appropriately for nutrition standards. So willing to step up and do great things. I do also want to emphasize, we're not there yet. This is not perfect. This is not perfect for every teacher, but we're in a much better place than we were two months ago. We're going to have a teacher for every kid. Every kid's going to have an outstanding educational experience, and that's what we need to make sure we do.
Ms. Crackey.
With all of this happening, and we're really pleased, I want to take note of the new teachers. And there, of course, can be someone in the building, but at the same time, I want to respect and use our supervisors who are not back in the building. And they're strung out pretty far because there aren't enough of them for that job. And if we're going to promote any single job, for me, that would be the one in the elementary school for sure because I think that can go a long way in helping them. So I want to say I'm all for it in case you can do it. Thank you.
And Ms. Crackey, I appreciate you bringing it up. We do have a posted position part-time for mentor teacher for retirees, recent or longer-term retirees that would like to come back and mentor both new teachers and student teachers. With 400 of them, we do recognize that they need some support, and we need some support in giving them that support. So speaking to the public, listening over TV or otherwise, anybody interested? Dr. Holman, Ms. Erdnberger, anybody interested in mentoring teachers for us? We would love to talk to you.
We will do anything for this school district. I'm speaking on your behalf as well. Any other questions, colleagues? Great. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight for the information. All right. Moving on now to item I to B, Budget and Audit Committee update. I will be sharing that information with you all tonight. Our meeting date was on July 25th. Board members in attendance, Mr. Head, Mr. Snow, and Mr. Tealyn, also Mr. Ray, Mr. Ryan, and Ms. Rykoski. I always struggle with their last names, so hopefully I said that correctly. Let's see. For the 2021-2022 full-year reforecast, it was shared that the budget favorability is expected to be $33 million with significant favorability in salaries and benefits, transportation, and one-time projects. The ending unassigned general fund balance is expected to be 18.8% less the board policy maximum of 20%. The 2022-23 budget upcoming activities, the general fund budget will be essentially flat with a $3.4% increase from $690 million to $693 million. Projected undersigned general fund balance will be a 16.8% at the end of the 2022-23 year within board policy reserve levels of that 10 and 20%. The total property tax levy is expected to decrease slightly with the end of payments related to the 2018 early leave incentive program. Some upcoming key dates that you all would want to be aware of. The budgets finalize on August 23rd. That's coming up here within a couple of weeks. Small group workshops for board members will take place on August 29th and 30th. The district will hold its public, public, excuse me, budget hearing on September the 8th. And then there will be a joint public hearing, which is part of the new legislation, on September the 21st. And then the board meeting to approve the budgets and levies will take place the day after, on September the 22nd. Moving on to ESER spending update. $36 million of the ESERS I, II, and III monies have all been spent to date. $36 million has been submitted for reimbursement, and $30 million has been received from the state, which is great. The 2021-22 excess cash reserve projects, something I want to mention is that $28 million spent year-to-date versus a budget of $41 million. And supplies and materials for the new schools have been significantly less than projected, which is also fantastic. The 2021-22 audit planning. Darren Osten and Emily Hunt from IDEE Bailey presented planning information regarding the financial statement audit for the 21-22 fiscal year. And colleagues, if you have any questions, please feel free to let myself or preferably Mr. Ryan know those questions, and I'm sure he will be able to help you out. With that, moving on to receipt of reports. We have two reports on the agenda this evening. Item J1, Head Start Monthly Board Report for June and July 2022, as well as item J2, OSER's 2021 Audit by the Nebraska Office of the Auditor of Public Accounts, issued on June 24, 2022. Moving on to closed session, Vice President Erdnberger.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, legal advice.
I have a motion to go into closed session by Vice President Erdnberger. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, whose voice is that? Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Suarez.
Yes.
Crackey. Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Seven A.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:22 PM. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 7:59 PM. Meeting adjourned.